Parents. Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the regular city commission meeting for this, the twenty-second day of September twenty twenty-five. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Dolison.
Here.
Commissioner Mercer. Commissioner Gansler.
Here.
Mayor Protem Yates.
Here.
And Mayor Birdsong.
Here. So we are going to be, uh, invocation is going to be by Minister Abdul Akhateegi from the First Missionary Baptist Church. Just hold up one second. And we're going to be led in the pledge of allegiance by the Montessori School students. And so after, but I, this is what I want to take place. It's after the invocation. I want all of you all to come down front to lead us in the pledge. All right?
Yes, sir.
All right, Minister Akhateegi, please stand your faithful.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, it's an honor to provide the invocation. Let us pray. Almighty God, we gather in this chamber with hearts humbled by the privilege to serve. We thank you for the city of Winter Haven, a place of beauty, resilience, and promise. As this commission meets, we ask for your divine guidance. Let wisdom flow through every conversation, and may each decision reflect justice, compassion, and the common good. Lord, bless our mayor, commissioners, and all who labor for the welfare of this city. Strengthen them with integrity, patience, and vision. May they lead not for personal gain, but for the flourishing of every resident, from the youngest child to the eldest neighbor. We lift up our community, families, schools, businesses, and neighborhoods. Let peace dwell in our streets, and let hope rise in every heart. As Jeremiah twenty-nine reminds us, may we seek the peace and prosperity of the city ye have carried us to, and in its welfare find our own. We commit this meeting into your hands. May your presence guide us, and your purpose prevail, in your masterless and marvelous name we pray. Amen.
All right. Class, please come forward. Please follow me.
Yes, let's go now.
Do you see where the flag is? Does it see through the mic? We want to say thank you for allowing us to be here. As an emotional student, I mean, teacher, I should say. You might see a little tears shooting from me. But tonight, we have our director and our owner, Ms. Vega and Ms. Courtney, here with us tonight, and several parents. We've been doing a lot of civil government the last couple of weeks. In my class, I've got third, fourth, and fifth grade. So my name is Mr. Tom, and I'd like to call everyone to form. Everyone? Order, face the flag, right hand over our heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as one. Thank you. Camera, we can, why don't we come here? Everybody try to step up. Come here, come close. Put some hands on, that's good. That's perfect. Here you go, Andrew, turn around there.
All right, we're gonna look here first, and then we'll let all of your parents, okay? All right, on the count of three, one, two, three. One more. All right, keep trying.
Again, thank you so much. Thank you.
So we'll move on.
May God bless each and every one of us. May Winter Haven continue to thrive. Thank you.
You have a second. Yeah.
Oh, the Constitution Week, that's right.
All right, what a great way to open a meeting. Uh, so we'll move right into our first proclamation for Constitution Week, and Ms. Laura Stokes, the Regent for Ponce de Leon Chapter of the National Society for the Daughters of the American Revolution, is here. If you can come forward to the podium. Whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-eighth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation and the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuance of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, Nathaniel J. Birdsong Jr., Mayor of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, does hereby proclaim September seventeenth through September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five as Constitution Week in the City of Winter Haven, Florida, and asks our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven. In witness whereof, he has herein to set his hand and cause the seal of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, to be affixed this twenty-second day of September of twenty twenty-five. Signed Nathaniel J. Birdsong Jr., Mayor, City of Winter Haven. Attest Vanessa Castillo, City Clerk.
The Ponce de Leon Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, is proud to accept a Constitution Week proclamation from the City of Winter Haven in observance of the two-hundred-and-thirty-eighth anniversary of the signing of the U.S. Constitution. September seventeenth through the twenty-third is set aside for Constitution Week. The annual celebration was established when signed into law by Dwight D. Eisenhower in nineteen fifty-six. Since then, the DAR has been promoting Constitution Week in our local communities by obtaining Constitution Week proclamations from mayors, placing displays in public places, distributing Constitution books to students, participating in vows across America, and more. Mayor Birdsong and Commissioners, thank you for joining us in the celebration of the Amer- of America's most important document, the U.S. Constitution.
All right, we've got two cameras, so hold your hands. All right, first one, one, two, three. One more. One, two, three. One more. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, our next proclamation this evening is in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, and I will ask Vanessa Castillo, our City Clerk, to come down and receive it with other members of our employee engagement team. Whereas the theme for Hispanic Heritage Month twenty twenty-five is collective heritage, honoring the past, inspiring the future. This theme emphasizes celebrating the rich cultural traditions and historical journeys of Hispanic and Latin American communities while simultaneously looking ahead to the future contributions and innovation of these communities. And whereas on September seventeenth, nineteen sixty-seven, President Lyndon B. Johnson signed into law the National Hispanic Heritage Week Bill, which authorized the President to designate the week of September fifteenth as National Heritage Week, National Hispanic Heritage Week, which was first observed in nineteen sixty-eight. In nineteen ninety-eight, President Ronald W. Reagan signed into law the creation of National Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas from America's earliest days, Hispanic Americans have played a prominent and important role in our national heritage, National Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to celebrate the rich cultural traditions and recognize and honor the significant achievements of U.S. Hispanic communities, which have influenced American culture and enriched the fabric of our society. Hispanic and Latin American people can trace their roots to Mexico, Central America, South America, and the Caribbean, consisting of Puerto Rico, Cuba, the Dominican Republic, and smaller Spanish-speaking islands. And whereas Hispanic Americans are the largest minority group in the United States today, generations of Hispanic Americans have consistently helped make our country strong and prosperous and embody the best of American values, including commitment to faith, family, and country. They served with honor in all branches of the Armed Forces, continuing a strong legacy and lifting up their communities and the economy as entrepreneur, entrepreneurs, executives, and small business owners, and made contributions in areas of arts, science, music, politics, academia, government, and sports. And whereas the Hispanic American community has left an indelible mark on our government, culture, and economy, they continue to embody the pioneering spirit of America today. Now therefore, Nathaniel J. Birdsong Jr., Mayor of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, does hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Winter Haven, and its continued efforts for diversity and inclusivity urge all citizens to honor and celebrate the contributions and achievements of Hispanic Americans in our nation's history and in our community. In witness whereof, he has herein to set his hand and cause the seal of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, to be affixed this twenty-second day of September twenty twenty-five. Signed Nathaniel J. Birdsong Jr., Mayor. Attest Vanessa Castillo, City Clerk.
Good evening. I'll give greetings in Spanish. Buenas tardes, alcalde, vicealcalde, alcaldes mayor, vicealcaldes mayor Protem, comisario, commissioners, administrador, diputado de la ciudad, which is our deputy city manager, y abogado de la ciudad, which is the city attorney, John, y todos en la audiencia. Everyone in the audience. My name is Vanessa, excuse me, my name is Vanessa Castillo, City Clerk for the City of Winter Haven, and I'm honored to once again serve as chairperson for this year's Hispanic Heritage Month Employee Luncheon. On behalf of the city's Employee Engagement Committee, along with our Hispanic and Latino employees and residents, I want to sincerely thank you for presenting us with the city's sixth proclamation recognizing National Hispanic Heritage Month, or as we proudly say in Spanish, mes nacional de la herencia hispana. While not all committee members could be here tonight, I want to acknowledge their dedication and hard work in ensuring that every aspect of our celebration is both meaningful and engaging. To launch this month of recognition, the team, everyone here, behind me here, um, we want to, okay. The team is thrilled to host our fifth Hispanic Heritage Month Luncheon for city employees and special guests this Friday, September twenty-sixth. This event has become a cherished tradition, always receiving enthusiastic feedback and growing anticipation from employees each year, including many of you. We are excited to continue this legacy of celebration, education, and community pride. And again, I couldn't have done it without this fabulous team that I have behind me, which is the Employee Engagement Committee. Thank you very much.
And in case you're wondering, the buttons that they're all wearing actually have their titles in Spanish. All right. How about we look here? On the count of three, one, two, three. One more. Perfect, thank you.
Okay, we have no developments of note. Commissioners, you have the minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of the August twenty-fifth, regular city commission meeting minutes, the September third city commission agenda review minutes, and their entirety.
Thank you. I will close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to these minutes may do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, reopen the city commission meeting. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye, aye. Opposeds, by the same sign. Hearing none, the minutes are adopted. All right, we, I'm going to, oh, this is second reading, but state law requires the substantive issue to be discussed at this hearing are naming of the taxing authority, which is the city of Winter Haven. The rollback rate is six point two-two-five-four mils. The percentage increase in the millage rate over the rollback rate is five point eight-six percent. The millage rate to be levied is six point five-nine-oh-oh. The reasons avalorum tax revenues are increasing, the avalorum proceeds resulting from the difference between the proposed millage rate and the rollback rate would be used to offset increased operating costs and fund capital projects. City Attorney, would you read the ordinance in its entirety?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner. Ordinance number O dash twenty-five dash twenty-eight, an ordinance of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, adopting a millage rate to provide sufficient funds for projected expenditures of the two thousand twenty-five dash two thousand twenty-six fiscal year budget of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Whereas on Wednesday, September tenth, two thousand twenty-five, the City of Winter Haven held a public hearing as required by Florida statute two hundred point zero-six-five. And whereas a budget has been prepared estimating expenditures and revenues of the city for the ensuing year with detailed information, including revenues to be derived from sources other than avalorum levy, and recommendations have been made as to the amount to be appropriated for the ensuing year. And whereas the City of Winter Haven strives to provide a level of service consistent with the expressed desires and demands of its citizens, and whereas it is necessary that taxpayers of Winter Haven also be willing to share the common expenditures of said services and to provide funds therefore. Now therefore, being enacted by the people of the City of Winter Haven, Florida as follows: one, the millage levy for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six is hereby set at a rate of six point five-nine-zero-zero mils. Number two, the millage rate of six point five-nine-zero-zero is five point eight-six percent higher than the rollback rate of six point two-two-five-four. Number three, if any word, sentence, clause, phrase, or provision of this ordinance for any reason is held to be unconstitutional void or invalid, the validity of the remainder of this ordinance shall not be affected thereby. Number four, the ordinance will take effect on October first, two thousand and twenty-five, introduced and passed on first reading after a public hearing on September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and considered on second reading this twenty-second day of September two thousand twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you, City, Deputy City Manager.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. Florida statutes require each taxing authority to annually set a millage rate for property taxation following the required public hearings. City Commission set the proposed rate of six point five-nine mils at the July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five city commission meeting. Property appraiser used that information to prepare a trim notice which were distributed in August. As part of the annual budget process, each September, the city commission establishes the avalorum millage rate for the ensuing fiscal year. Millage rate must be established by ordinance and have a public hearing at each of the two readings of the ordinance. The ordinance is read in its entirety at each public hearing, the first of which was September twen- tenth, twenty twenty-five, and the second is this evening. Uh, this is for the new fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-five. The six point five-nine mil avalorum rate will generate thirty-one million, two hundred and two thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars to the city's general fund at a collection rate of ninety-six point five percent, and staff recommends the city commission approve ordinance O twenty-five, twenty-eight.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance O dash twenty-five dash twenty-eight, adopting the millage rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. I will now close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to ordinance O twenty-five, twenty-eight may do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, reopen the city commission meeting. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye, aye. Opposeds, by the same sign. Hearing none. Ordinance O twenty-five, twenty-eight is adopted. Ordinance O twenty-five, twenty-nine, would you read in its entirety again, City Manager? I mean, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner. Ordinance number O dash twenty-five dash twenty-nine, an ordinance making appropriations of funds for defraying the expenses of the municipal government of the City of Winter Haven for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five dash two thousand twenty-six, adopting the budget of the City of Winter Haven, Florida fiscal year commencing October one, two thousand twenty-five, as the official budget of the City of Winter Haven, Florida fiscal year two thousand twenty-five dash twenty, two thousand twenty-six, provided for severability and providing an effective date. Whereas Florida statutes require each taxing authority annually adopt tentative and final budgets, and whereas the City of Winter Haven has had workshops and commission meetings regarding the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget, and whereas estimates have been made by the city manager of the City of Winter Haven as presented in the budget of the City of Winter Haven, Florida fiscal year commencing October one, two thousand and twenty-five, showing that the sum of two-hundred-and-sixteen million, three-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-six dollars will be required for defraying the expenses of maintaining the government of the City of Winter Haven, Florida for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six dash two thousand, pardon me, two thousand twenty-five dash two thousand twenty-six. And whereas the budget of the City of Winter Haven, Florida fiscal year commencing October one, two thousand twenty-five anticipates sufficient revenues to fund projected expenditures of two-hundred-and-sixteen million, three-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-six dollars. Now therefore, being enacted by the people of the City of Winter Haven, Florida as follows: number one, the sum of two-hundred-and-sixteen million, three-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-six dollars is hereby appropriated out of all of the various revenues accruing to the City of Winter Haven and set aside for the purpose of paying the expenses of and maintaining the government of the City of Winter Haven for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five dash two thousand twenty-six. Number two, the budget of the City of Winter Haven, Florida fiscal year commencing October one, two thousand and twenty-five on file in the office of the city clerk is hereby adopted by reference as the official budget of the City of Winter Haven, Florida for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five dash two thousand twenty-six. Number three, if any word, sentence, lyric, clause, phrase, or provision of this ordinance for any reason is held to be unconstitutional void or invalid, the validity of the remainder of this ordinance shall not be affected thereby. Is the intention of the city commission that sections of this ordinance may be renumbered or relettered, and that ordinance may be changed to chapter, section, article, or such other appropriate word or phrase in order to accomplish such intentions, and that sections of this ordinance may be renumbered or relettered in the correction of typographical and or scriveners errors which do not affect the intent and be authorized by the city manager or his designee without need of public hearing by filing a corrected or recodified copy of same with the city clerk. Number five, this ordinance shall take effect on October one, two thousand twenty-five, introduced on first reading after a public hearing on September tenth, two thousand twenty-five, considered tonight on second reading, public hearing this twenty-second day of September two thousand twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy City Manager.
Florida statute requires each taxing authority to annually adopt tentative and final budgets. The law also requires that local government hold a public hearing prior to the adoption of each of those budgets. The trim notice, which was sent to all property owners in August and notified them of the proposed millage rate and date of the first hearing. A tentative budget has been prepared based on the city's needs and commission directives authorized at the budget workshop held in July of this year. Those directives included the adoption of the current millage rate of six point five-nine mils. The city budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six is two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-six dollars. And staff recommends city commission approve ordinance O twenty-five, twenty-nine. Now you've seen budget presentations in full at your previous hearings, but we wanted to just hit some highlights tonight and kind of hit those higher areas of focus. So the total budget is just under two-hundred-and-fifty-two million. You might remember there's that difference there from the two sixteen in the fact sheet that is part of the cash carry forward. You also may recall that it is forty-five million dollars less than last year's budget. Much of, much of that is a difference due largely to capital projects that were budgeted in fiscal year twenty-five, things like Lake Elbert, Winter Haven Recreation and Cultural Center, Chain of Lakes Park. The millage rate remains steady at six point five-nine mils, which is the same as it has been since fiscal year twenty-two, and this year it'll generate just over thirty-one million dollars in avalorum revenue. The gross tax taxable property value in the city has increased by twelve percent, and the bulk of that, about ten percent of that twelve, is from new development within the city. And the general fund budget is just above seventy-nine point five million dollars, and we will retain a thirty-one percent fund balance in the general fund this year. And you may recall from the city manager's email on Friday, um, that fund balance and that reserve was, was clearly noted in our Fitch rating when they improved our credit rating, that the policies that create that fund balance and the way that you all have decided to manage that is looked upon very favorably by our creditors. Uh, we also have a focus on employees, so included in the budget are market-based salary adjustments that help to keep us competitive in recruitment and retention, uh, the total of seven-hundred-and-sixty-six positions this year, uh, some new which we reviewed previously. A big focus on public safety in this year's budget, uh, seven of the new positions are in the areas of police and fire, specifically three new officers and four firefighters. Uh, we have construction of Fire Station Five included in this year's budget and a significant investment in police rolling stock. I was, uh, meeting with the chief earlier, I think we're replacing about thirty police vehicles this year, uh, to make sure that they have reliable vehicles to provide that service. Uh, we have focus on economic support, so one point two-nine million funded with external partners and service providers. Uh, recall, these are nonprofits achieving things that are a priority of the community, but not things we do directly, so things like Food Ministry, Mash Transit, our partnerships with Keep Winter Haven Clean and Beautiful, Keep Polk County Clean and Beautiful, and Grant Aid, uh, your Grant Aid program is included in there as well. And then about a million dollars in economic support, uh, for programs focused on affordable housing, homeless initiatives, and small business programs. And then last but not least, a focus on infrastructure, so nine point three million invested into transportation improvements, two million of which is into your annual resurfacing program to keep roads, uh, in the community in good shape, and forty-three point three million of that is into water sewer infrastructure improvements, um, two point four-three million of that is in water sewer repair and replacement, so that is taking care of the system we have.
All right. Commissioners.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance O dash twenty-five dash twenty-nine, adopting the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. I will close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to ordinance O twenty-five, twenty-nine may do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and reopen the city commission meeting and the discussion comments. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye, aye. Opposeds, by the same sign. Hearing none, we have adopted a budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Comments from the audience? No one signed up, however, if someone came in and didn't have an opportunity to sign up that would like to address this commission, you may do so at this time by coming forward, stating your name and address for the record. All right. Seeing none, we have no other ordinances, uh, second reading, so Commissioners, you have the consent agenda. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, uh, motion to approve the consent agenda as a whole.
Thank you. I will close the commission meeting and open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to any item on the consent agenda may do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, reopen the city commission meeting. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye, aye. in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's by the same sign. Hearing none, the consent agenda is adopted in its entirety. All right, resolutions. Resolution R-2548, would you read about how long, this is Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution R-2548, a resolution of the City Commission of the city Winter Haven, Florida, updating the Grant and Aid Application Review Committee and related provisions, and providing for severability, the administrative correction of scrivener's errors, a repealing clause, and providing for an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy City Manager?
In 2022, the Commission established the Grant and Aid Application Review Committee. This was initially formed by each Commissioner recommending an individual for appointment to a three-year term. Three of the original five members agreed to continue serving for a second three-year term beginning in 2025. Two of the seats were vacated for various reasons and then were refilled by the City Commission. R-2548 makes some updates to the Grant and Aid Review Committee process, so it removes specific committee members' names from the resolution. It requires committee vacancies to be advertised by the city clerk for applications, and then they'll be reviewed and then presented to the City Commission, who ultimately make the recommendation and appointment. The annual meeting timeframes, rather than having specific dates in there, those will go to just kind of timeframes so we can plan for those a little better. And the original resolution listed three specific tax, specific staff members, but as those change over time, it makes more sense to allow city manager to just appoint three ex officios every year to that committee. And following adoption of R-2548, one currently vacancy will be advertised and a recommendation for appointment will be brought back to the City Commission. Additionally, a fall planning meeting of the Grant and Aid Committee will be held in preparation for the 2026 application cycle. There's no financial impact associated with the passage of R-2548. Staff recommends the City Commission approve resolution 2548 and authorize the city manager and/or is designated to take any and all necessary actions related thereto.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Motion to approve Resolution R-2548.
Thank you. I will close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to resolution R-2548 may do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, reopen the commission meeting, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's by the same sign. Hearing none, resolution R-2548 is adopted. We have no ordinances, first reading. We have a new business item, 15A.
All right, so this is...
Deputy City Manager?
This is the contribution agreement with Southeastern University, as they look to expand into downtown Winter Haven and to occupy the upper floor of the recently renovated Exchange Building located at 250 Magnolia Avenue Southwest. Southeastern intends to maintain administrative faculty and student presence at this location. To facilitate the expansion of their university into downtown, the contribution agreement between the city and Southeastern has been developed. It identifies certain performance metrics to be achieved by Southeastern over the next three years, and is subject to successful completion of annual performance metrics. And if they complete those, the city shall contribute up to $50,000 per year for three years. The financial impact associated with this contribution is up to $50,000 per year for three fiscal years, totally a maximum contribution of about $150,000. Year one funding will come from an increase to interest income as identified by the finance team, and payments for years two and three will be budgeted for in the appropriate fiscal years during the normal budgeting process. Staff recommends the City Commission approve the contribution agreement and authorize the mayor and other city officials to execute the same, and for the city manager or his designated to take all necessary steps to ensure compliance with the terms of the contribution agreement.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Motion to approve the contribution agreement. S E U. S E U.
All right. Thank you. I will close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to this item may do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, reopen the City Commission meeting, all those in favor...
Mr. Mayor, before you all vote, Mr. Fisher Dassler mentioned at this meeting...
You got conflict and I've signed the form here, giving it to the city clerk at this time, and I will not be voting.
All right. So, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, it's by the same sign. There's nobody else left.
Nobody left.
All right, so the contribution agreement with Southeastern University is passed. City Commissioner Leeson reports. Commissioner Mercer?
I did participate in honoring our heroes in the Freedom Walk on September 11, and I had conflicts with some of the rest of them, either work or personal, so of the others, so I didn't make some other than that, I didn't make the rest of them.
Commissioner Dassler?
Went to the, my next and my last meeting with the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust over in Clearwater, or St. Pete, and I understand Mr. Yates was there, and I didn't see you. You came over there the next day. We crossed on the high floor. So, yeah, I had to leave, I went to the Chamber Annual Meeting, of course, great job with the Chamber over at Noro Mayo, and I had to leave, bail out just a little bit early from that meeting to get over to my FMIT meeting, so needed to be in two places at once. We had a Theater Winter Haven Golf Tournament, Theater Winter Haven, this was their third annual golf tournament. They raised, I'm gonna step out on a limb and say at least 15,000, maybe 20,000, but it was a great time, everybody had so much fun, and that's become quite an event. Also went to the Freedom Walk and listened to the bagpipes, and we had a new bag, I think it was a new bagpipe player, but very good. And just for those that are wondering, today is the summer solstice, so this, you know, this is why we're all, not summer solstice, but it's the last day of the summer. So, no more wearing...
End of the 2:30.
Huh?
2:30.
2:30, that's right, so no more wearing summer clothes after today, so. And last but not least, I just wanted to talk to my fellow Commissioners and also to staff about, I took an interesting tour out at Saratoga and the football, baseball complex, and we have a, first of all, the turf out there is in great shape, the people taking care of the fields are doing such a good job, and our baseball building is new, renovated, and been, you know, very nice, and I can remember that back in the 70s when I played out there, when there were two baseball fields, rave and race. Place has grown tremendously. And what I've come to understand is that there is unprecedented cooperation now between the football guys and the baseball guys. Normally, I've come to understand that there was always some sort of a headbutting, there weren't a lot of cooperation, but now, and cooperation out there is really, really good. And I want us to focus on the football and the football structure primarily, because that building is old and it's been added on, and it's been fixed, and it's been painted, and it's been lipstick on a pig, or whatever you want to call it, but we kind of fix that building up and fix that building up and fix that building up. I think it's time that we, as a commission, really focus on the football building, not the baseball, the football building. And we have 361 kids out there now playing football, and you throw in the baseball kids, you're gonna have over 750 kids out there. So, things like parking, if we can get, and what I suggest that we consider is one master board out there that covers both football and baseball, and of course, you can still have your baseball board and your football board to kind of do the day-to-day stuff, but now in the spirit of cooperation that we have, maybe we can have some sort of a master board that would answer to Julie and Tru to kind of look at the whole project, the whole complex as a whole. And I know there's talk of some changes going on out there with the city potentially, you know, buying the place, getting more land, I don't know exactly where we are with all that, but this would be a good time, I think, to maybe redo the place. Let's get the parking consistent for both football and baseball. Let's put some money into the football building and get it to where it's, there's, you know, places where they can keep all their equipment and make the building, you know, a real nice concession stand and things like that, that's befitting of a facility that has that many children out there. I mean, Coach Tate, you know, our football coach, our previous football coach is out there having clinics two days a week, and they're packed. There's not another room out there for kids, they're coming out there to learn how to play football, and that's gonna do nothing but make Winter Haven High School football and Lake Region football programs better because they're getting all this training from Coach Tate and from others, so. I just, I want to throw it out there that as we move forward out there, there's some real opportunity. You know, I had, for 10 years, I have harped on the fact that we should get the Pony League kids out of there, move the Pony League kids, those are the 13-year-olds, and move them to the new, the new baseball fields, take that space, maybe put T-ball there, and all the T-ball facilities can be parking, and we can redesign that whole place for parking and get football and baseball cooperating to where they can kind of work together when they're, you know, for the parking and for things like that, so. I won't be here next year, but I'm throwing it out there as a challenge to you guys, that there's a real opportunity now, that both sides are really getting along good, they all want to work together to pull this off. We don't need a lot of work on the baseball, we've done all that, the fields look great, we just got to pay a little bit of attention to the football complex, so. And more and more kids are coming in from all over, from other, from other programs, and it's growing and it's getting bigger, and we just need to pay a little bit of attention. You guys are out there, I don't know if you toured a tour of the place? I did, and it needs some work, and I don't know if we can keep painting it and fixing it, or we tear it down and start over, but I think, I think we need to, I think we need to move that up the list is what I'm trying to get to, so. Thank you, Mayor, for indulging me, I just wanted to put that out there for consideration, so.
All right. Commissioner Dolison?
Oh, thank you. I was able to get to the Freedom Walk and, you're right, the bagpipes was amazing, but just, you know, the whole recognizing and honoring 9/11 and what it meant, what it has meant to all of us who remember that day so, so well, the tragedy of that day, but also the triumph. And also our men and women who are first responders and recognizing their contribution to run to a situation while others are trying to get away from it, just makes you really appreciate, you know, those who put themselves in that, in that position, so it was just wonderful to honor them. But the memory of those who did, in fact, sacrificed their lives. So, that's, that was a highlight for me, and I was out on vacation last week, so I didn't have an opportunity to do much more than that, so I'll end with that.
All right, thank you. May I approach you?
Thank you. Yeah, so I also attended the Freedom Walk, and there's a memorial there on September 11th, it's, how many people come? I really expected to see a bigger crowd this year, especially with the current events that have occurred as of late. And then you go on social media and it's like, well, I didn't know anything about it. So, every year, September 11th, same date, we have a Freedom Walk downtown Winter Haven. Come out, enjoy it, and celebrate our heroes and all that they do for us in Winter Haven and, and for all those throughout the nation. It's really, if I'm not mistaken, I think Winter Haven's the only one that puts a memorial service together on September 11th in Polk County. It's a great partnership with other municipalities, and so hopefully we can really pack South Central Park in the years to come for that event. But it's a great event, please don't stop doing it from lack of attendance, because the people that do come are greatly appreciative that we do it. I couldn't tell you how many people in the days after that said, just, you know, thank you for doing that, so. Thank you for staff for putting that on, I look forward to next year's event, and, and hopefully we'll, again, like I said, pack that house on, on September 11th next year. With that being said, I had to take a moment, I have an opportunity to have a Bruce Lyons moment, and I've just got to take it. So, we were at a board meeting in St. Pete for the Florida League of Cities, this is my first board meeting, so we had our orientation, everything went well, had the board meeting, and a presentation during that board meeting was a new product that the, that the Florida League is developing, that'll be just a game changer for municipalities across the state, across the country, and then eventually into the private sector. I can't tell you anything more about it, but it's gonna be incredible. So, with that, that's my presentation for tonight.
That's you?
I'm done.
May I approach you, Yates? You can't have a Bruce Lyons moment.
I just did.
You did, and we are not going to accept it, so you got to tell us something else. But, no, on a serious note, congratulations again, one of the things that we did was the Ridge League, where the new officers were sworn in, and just making sure that you're on the board, and so congratulations. The Ridge League dinner was in Lakeland, I had my Lakes Advisory Committee meeting, PRWC meeting, the Chamber Annual Meeting, which was a great event, and I did the walk as well. You know, we walked how many miles? Half a mile?
20. At least 20.
We walked half a mile, baby. And the, one of the things that I really, really enjoyed was the naming of New Beginnings High School. The Winter Haven campus was named in honor of Sam Killerbrew. And basically, it was, there were a lot of people at that event. So, the burden was there, and so, I mean, it was well, well-attended. And also, the lab was named after Sarita Tinsley. And so, I mean, it was really, really, really a great event, the, well, they cooperated, and just wanted to say that New Beginnings High School now has three different locations, and so they are really serving kids that may have fallen through the cracks, the kids that just couldn't make it in regular high school, and they're serving these youths, so, great job there. That's it for me. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner, no, no comments this evening, glad to be here, thank you.
Deputy City Manager?
I have two items for you this evening.
All right.
So, just first, wanted to reiterate that our Fitch rating has risen to a double A+ just, that's significant, and I don't think we should overlook it, just a testament to the fiscal guidance and decision-making of the Commission and the work of our entire city team, you know, and everything that we do, you know, and I think three big highlights from that were thorough, strategic, and transparent budget process, which I think is, you know, clear in what we did here tonight, overall fiscal management, and then again, strong reserves and the related policies that protect those. The other thing I just wanted to mention was just a reminder that there is a House Select Committee on Property Taxes tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. City Manager will be speaking at that, which is why he's not here this evening, and that should be broadcast on the Florida Channel, if anybody's interested in watching it.
If there's a digital link, would you mind sending that out to everybody?
Yep, we'll get it to you.
Mr. Mayor, I might want to add, I meant to add this earlier about that meeting, I was talking to Casey Cook at the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, and he just went on and on about T. Michael, about what a good speaker he was, and how he was selected to be representing the mid-size cities, there's a small city, mid-size, and a large, and he was personally selected to represent all mid-size cities at this meeting because of his grasp of the issue, his ability to communicate, and they just went on and on about, at the FMIT meeting, about how, what a good communicator and how he's got such good grasp on everything, so. I told him, T., that when I was driving home, but I want everybody else to know too, he was very highly thought of at, at the, up there at the meeting that I was at, so, anyway, go ahead.
That's it for me tonight, thank you.
That's all you have?
That's all I have, yep, thank you.
City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So, as you already know, candidate qualifying for the City Commission seat numbers four and five took place last week, which started at noon on September 15th and ended at noon on September 19th. For seat number four, those running are Matthew Crowley, Chad Davis, and Manuel Fonseca. For seat five, those running are Clifton Dolison and Melinda Calagritis. And that's all I have.
All right. Deputy City Clerk? All right. Emergency mail is not received for the agenda. Motion to adjourn.